All right, would everybody please rise for the invocations going to be performed by Commissioner Ward tonight?
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we ask for blessings of all the citizens, all the workers, all the employees, our God. We ask that you will bless this council. We ask that all decisions made tonight will be for the betterment of this community, our citizens, and that they meet with your with your approval, our God. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. We pray. Amen.
Remain standing for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the meeting order at six o'clock. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick, here. Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Carnes.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Downs.
Here.
Approval of minutes from regular meeting, April 22nd, 2024. If there are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and a second to approve as presented.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Have no treasurer's report tonight. Approval of bills to be paid. Same thing here. If there are no questions or concerns, would entertain a motion and a second to approve as presented. Motion by Commissioner Patrick, second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right. Proclamations, we've got one tonight, and this is honoring Steve Merrick, who was recently inducted into the IBCA Hall of Fame for his storied career in broadcasting. And everybody in town, I think, knows Steve and has got some memories of him. So very happy to do this, and he's got his family here with him tonight. And we're going to have two more of these coming up in the future. One for Jason Carnes and one for Jimmy Kousen. So three people getting inducted into the Hall of Fame is kind of a big deal and something that we're proud of. So I'm going to read this proclamation here, Steve, and then we'll take some pictures, all right? You can get some with your family, too. All right. So whereas Steve Merrick was inducted into the Illinois Basketball Coaches Hall of Fame on May 4th, 2024, and whereas the IBCA exists to serve, honor, promote, and develop the game of basketball in Illinois through advocacy for and support and celebration of players, officials, media, fans, and coaches, whereas the IBCA each year honors individuals, teams, and organizations for their tremendous contributions to the game of basketball in Illinois. Whereas Mr. Merrick's career began in 1990 when he stepped in as play-by-play announcer for Ducoy Indian football on WDQN radio due to Gary Showalter relinquishing his beloved role due to his ALS. Mr. Merrick then continued on that year as a colored analyst for Indian basketball alongside Roger Kraft. And whereas in 2001, upon Roger Kraft's retirement, he assumed the role of play-by-play announcer. He continued uninterrupted for WDQN, Sunny 97.1, and Weekly Press Sports Network through the 2022-2023 season. And whereas basketball highlights include calling many IHSA Tournament Series games, including postseason runs by the Indians in 1999, 2000, 2003, 2008, 2009, 2010, and 2011, football broadcasting highlights include the 1992 state championship season, 1994, 1995, 2002, and 2008 state championship games, as well as broadcasting a total of 76 Ducoy Indian IHSA playoff games. Indian baseball broadcasting highlights include the 2000 Indian IHSA Elite Eight appearance, as well as many regional and sectional and one super sectional game. And whereas Steve Merrick's longtime dedication to the Ducoy High School Indians, the fans, the community, and his outstanding accomplishments make him well qualified to represent the city of Ducoy. Now, therefore, I, Josh Downs, mayor of the city of Ducoy, and the city commissioners, extend congratulations and do hereby proclaim May 14th, 2024, IBCA Hall of Fame inductee Steve Merrick Day in the city of Ducoy and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observance. Proclaim this 13th day of May, 2024. All right, Steve. All right, those are always fun to do, and I know all Indian fans miss Steve on the radio every week. But he's having a lot of fun with his grandkids, I think, so we're happy for that. Okay, guests, we got Ron Darnell here to report on the water department tonight. Ron?
I didn't know I was going to be following the voice of the Indians. A spot here in his first class.
Good luck.
So, hi, I'm Ron Darnell, director of the water department. Thank you for your time this evening. Just a quick little update on what our department has going on. We maintain the water lines throughout the city, including the surrounding areas of Ducoy, Old Ducoy, Cherry Lake, Route 14 and 154, Kathleen Road, and Davisville Road. We also maintain the wastewater mains and pump stations throughout the station. The pump stations are collection sized and collect the sewage from our residents and our businesses, and we then transfer it out to the sewer treatment plant, water treatment plants. There are four other members in our department, Cody Greenwood, Drew Porter, Charles Mercier, and Charles Payne. And they are very dedicated. They give up a lot of time and energy, and they're doing a good job. We are all being cross-trained all every day, and we're learning new positions. We have some new employees, and everybody's doing great. So I cannot say, you know, they're all utilized in some way, whether it be meter readers, jueli locators, equipment operators. They're doing a great job. So, and plus, we also back up the other departments when they need help, and they're always willing to do that. So I commend them for that. So, and I cannot say enough about the support that we get from the girls in the front office. Ms. Ruth, Janelle, Shannon, Amy, and Paula. They keep us in line every day, and believe me, they have their hands full. I said Ms. Ruth, but this is what she did to me today, okay? And so I walked in the office this afternoon, and I had my boots on, my pants tucked in my pants, in my boots, and she looked at me, she said, Ron, you do know you're going to be on TV tonight. And I hope you're not coming looking like that to the city. So anyway, so, but I appreciate her support, too. So our infrastructure in the town is in okay shape. Yes, we have our problem areas, okay? We have some bad water mains. We have a few water breaks or sewer main breaks throughout the city. But, you know, in 2021, there were 25 main breaks and 20 service breaks. In 2022, there were 41 main breaks and 27 service leaks. And in 2023, we've dropped back down to 14 main breaks and 12 service leaks. And so far this year, we've had nine main breaks and seven service breaks. So we've been very fortunate and had pretty much water loss for the city, and we're happy with that. And our water usage for last year was about 800, 208 million gallons for the year. That averages out to about 800,000 gallons of water per day. And so for our community, we're keeping up well. So that's what we like. The upcoming projects for the city, that's going to include Hickory Street, water sewer main relocations due to the state redoing that part of the of the Hickory Street. We're getting, they're supposed to be starting a new water tower that will be installed out the industrial park. Once that gets installed and up in operation, we will be eliminating the million gallon underground storage tank that doesn't meet compliance with the EPA rules and regulations anymore, and it's going to be very costly to repair. And so we are just going to eliminate that. So our equipment in our department is in good shape. We have a large inventory of supplies on hand to help maintain the work that we have to do. And so we're doing good there. So there's always a want. So our next want is we are in very much need of a valve exerciser. And Mayor, I think you came by us on Division Street here about a week or so ago, and we were having a demonstration on this valve exerciser. And we checked two valves in the city on that day, and what we found was one was totally inoperable. And we're going to have to schedule repairs for that. And the other one was operable. And that's, and plus, EPA is now requiring us that we have to start into keeping logs of when we exercise our valves. And so this would be greatly, a big benefit for the city, for the water department and the city. So, you know, the valves are what help shut down the water when we have a water break or we have to, you know, service the lines in any way. And they're very important to us, and it's, it's important that we start maintaining these in a better way than what we've been doing. So, you know, the EPA these days, and trust me, I am not saying anything bad about them because I think that what they're doing is for everybody's best interest, okay? I am. But what they are doing is for these smaller communities in these towns, they're putting a financial burden on these communities. Plus, we don't have the manpower to do everything that they're requiring. And so it's, they're, like I said, it's not a bad thing, but it does create a burden. We have to do the red, the lead line replacement, and that should be starting later on this year. And so that's, that's about where we're at. It's been a good year, but it's, you know, we, we spend some money on equipment, but we were kind of behind on our equipment. And so we've been updating that. And so everything that council does for us, we appreciate, and appreciate your support. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
We got anything for Ron?
I think that was good. I thought it was real good.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Yep.
Okay, on appointments, we got a few tonight. A motion and vote to appoint Scott Beasley to the police suspension board for a term of two years, expired May of 2026. Would entertain a motion and a second to do so. Motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Next, we have motion and vote to appoint Ralph Smith and Adam Croxton to the Ducoy-Pinkynville Airport Board for a term of four years to May of 2028. I just want to, they're both in the crowd tonight, and I know their bios are in your guys' packet. I just want to thank both of them for stepping up and met with Ralph for about an hour a couple of weeks ago. And Adam, I had a couple of conversations about it. So we got some people with good background in aviation, which is important for out there. And so I've told them both, I appreciate them serving. So with that, would entertain, this will replace myself and Ruth as well. So entertain a motion and a second to.
They'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. Item C, looks like we're going to need a motion to table this. Motion to vote to hire Keith North. So we're going to table that. Need a motion and a second to do so. Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick, second by Commissioner Cruz. Roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. And last, a motion and vote to accept the resignation of Cale Diggins from the police department, and this is with regret. Cale's been a good officer for us for, gosh, eight years, 10 years, something like that. But left to take a position that he thought would be better for him and his family. So we wish him the best and, again, accept it with regret. Entertain a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mayor Downs.
Yes. All right, we have no consent agenda or public agenda. We are on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2024 R0405 is a resolution authorizing contract with Serveline, and this is for final approval. And this will be the functions like an insurance policy for water, water leaks at your home. Lowest amount, I think, is a $500 coverage, right, Ruth?
Yes.
And that's about $1.50 a month. This will be a three-year contract, correct?
Yes.
Everyone that is a City of Ducoy water customer will get a letter mailed to them from this company. There is a year timeframe to opt out.
Yes.
Right? Anything I'm missing?
No, it's just for service leak adjustments.
Yep.
Is what it's for.
So, yeah, it's, it's, it's been going well in Sessor and Pinkynville. I know other communities have as well. And so, you know, it's, it's one of our biggest issues with, with ladies in the office and Ron's team with, with water leaks and at people's houses. They don't know about it, and their bill's three or four or $500. And, you know, people just, quite frankly, can't pay that. So we've been talking about this for a couple of meetings, and so this is for final approval. Entertain a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Second.
Second by.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Carnes, roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty-four, R zero four zero seven, resolution authorizing contract with Campanella and Campanella Brothers of Law, this is for final approval as well from the last meeting and the, uh, only changes were, uh, Caitlin clarified exactly, you know, some of the duties that they've picked up over the last year and, um, an increase of a thousand dollars a month in their compensation, so would entertain a motion and a second for final approval.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Cruz, second by Commissioner Carnes, roll call.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes. All right, resolution twenty twenty-four, R zero five zero one, is a resolution awarding bid and authorizing bid award contingent on EDA approval to CBNI and this is for the water tower, uh, new water tank in the industrial park and this is for debate and public display. Did the bid opening last week, um, what was the total Ruth, four point five and some change?
I think it was four point seven.
Okay.
Total.
Um, yeah, they were the only person that showed up to bid, so, um, would entertain a motion and a second to put that on public display.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick, second by Commissioner Carnes, roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes. And last is resolution twenty twenty-four, R zero five zero two, resolution condemning five nineteen East North, this is for final approval as well. Entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkpatrick, second by Commissioner Carnes, roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes. All right, on other business, um, new monthly water billing, Ruth, I'm gonna let you explain our spreadsheet here since you're the one that made it.
Okay, the city is going to be moving, all water bills will be due on the tenth of the month, but this won't begin until July, the July billing, so July tenth, we probably will have one more cycle that will be billed, um, so if you do not receive a bill by the end of June, June thirtieth, um, you should note that your next bill is actually due July tenth, so if you don't receive a bill, call the water office and then every month after that, water bills will do on the tenth and shut offs will be due on the twentieth, so everybody's on the same cycle, everything's consistent.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I appreciate Ruth and the ladies in the office and Ron and his team for taking this on and, and we've been working on this for six months or more probably, talking about it and trying to figure out if it would work, so, um, the consistency and, and our biggest issue right now is with the, with the mail, quite frankly, and people not getting the bill and so this is, you know, put this as an alarm in your phone or a calendar thing, recur on the tenth of every month and, and note to pay your water bill and hopefully eliminates all those issues, so, um, you know, we don't have to vote on this, this is just a, a change that we're making within our offices, so. Um, let me talk about this now, Ruth or anyone?
Uh, yeah.
Um, one other thing on other business, um, the, the city has applied, uh, with IDNR, Department of Natural Resources for what's called a boat area access development grant, um, two hundred thousand dollars is the maximum, uh, there's, there's no matching dollars required, which is the best kind of grant we can get. Um, we've applied for, we're going to apply for it this week, um, the goal is to get a new concrete boat ramp and have designated parking, uh, city has received, well, we see like ten or twelve letters of support today from the city lake residents. I got stopped by somebody at Flames Orchard, uh, Saturday, was, lives out there and said they were excited to hear about it, so, uh, and the application is due on the seventeenth, which is this week and so we, we've got, uh, an engineering firm that's working with us on that and so hope to, hope we can get the full thing. There's only a million dollars allotted statewide, but there's only usually a few applications, so fingers crossed that we can get this, so, uh, we should know, I would say in a couple of months, so. All right, Commissioner's comments, Cale?
Nothing for me.
Um, yes, I'd like to thank Ron for getting up and talking and, um, the water department, they do do a great job, all those guys and all this rain we've had and everything like that and, you know, we do all take for granted that every time you turn on that spigot, the water's gonna be coming out and that's a big deal for, you know, that we all have that to, you know, that we can always count on that. Also, Steve Merrick, I want to congratulate him, that, it is a big deal, that's a big deal that very few people in the state of Illinois get nominated or even to let off to make it and we're lucky to have a few of them here in Ducoy and, and, and I just want everybody to realize how big a deal it is, so thanks to Steve.
Yeah. Mike?
Yes, Ron, you are an excellent speaker, we need to hear more of you. Congratulations, Steve, you always do an excellent job on the radio, I mean, it's just like you're right there, you're, you're great and you do a great job with that. Also, uh, congratulations to the upcoming seniors, eighth graders, uh, college students who've already graduated on their graduation, it's quite an accomplishment.
Yeah. Good?
I'm good.
All right. Jill?
Ditto, congrats Steve and thanks to Jill for sharing him, I know Bob and I talk about all the sacrifices that the Black Casta make, so we appreciate you sharing him and thanks for all you've done for Ducoy Athletics, it is a big deal and good luck to the spring sports, it's postseason, so we're excited and, yeah, and Ron, you did a great job. I agree, public speaking is, yeah, it's good.
Coach?
Great job, Ron, uh, all the graduates, congratulations, uh, good luck to all the ones involved in spring sports and I knew that little fellow when he was three or four years of age and I knew he'd be my quarterback someday because I saw his mom chasing him around the house two or three times and I knew he'd be a scrambler, so anyway, congratulations, Steve, you were dedicated and everybody knows that, your love for Ducoy Athletics, thank you.
Ruth?
Yeah, congratulations, Steve, it's good to see a fellow owl up here making good in the community and thanks, Ron, I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, I, I think everybody took everything I was gonna say, so, um, the, the graduates is, is a, is, was one thing on my mind, uh, it's always a, a good weekend, um, for all the kids that are either moving on or, or moving on to a career, so congratulations to them, spring sports, like Jill said, our baseball team set a school record last week with thirty wins, uh, so they're primed for a, a long postseason run, maybe we get Steve out of retirement to call some of those games, but, um, yeah, congratulations again, Steve, um, you know, everybody around town, you know, appreciates what you did for all those years and I'm glad somebody called out Jill because, um, anybody who gives their time uh, in, in those positions or, or even what we do up here is, uh, you know, their spouses at home alone a lot and so, uh, we appreciate you sharing him with us, so, uh, Ron, good job, maybe you can come up and, uh, in the next couple of meetings and just talk to talk, huh?
Yeah, do the prayer, that's right.
Uh, okay, anybody in the crowd have anything? Come on up, Doug.
Uh, Mayor, Council, I just want to come up, spend a couple of minutes to address some stuff I've seen, uh, on social media after a severe weather event we had, uh, last Wednesday, there, there've been some comments regards people not being out here, the outdoor sirens inside their homes and I just want to reemphasize that the outdoor sirens are meant to, to give notification to people that's working outdoors that they should seek, uh, shelter and, and it's highly recommended anymore that people have multiple ways to receive those weather alerts and in the day of modern technology, um, between the WEA, the WES alerts through the phones, uh, weather apps, if you have a smartphone, a lot of YouTube streamers are out there covering these events to ensure that, uh, people have multiple ways to receive those events and know when to take shelter on approaching storms and that's probably the first activation we kind of that system in three or four years, so we've really been lucky, we've not been, put in position to have to activate those in severe weather events, but other than that, that's all I wanted to address since I've seen that at least on one, one discussion group in town, but that...
How many sirens do we have?
We have six sirens, uh, in the city. That covers most of the city, they're probably the fringe east and west sides, they probably don't cover, but we do have six sirens, about a mile coverage radius is what, is what they recommend, but they are mechanical devices, so they could fail and they're activated by VHF, uh, tones, you know, if you have a failure or sometimes you have heavy range stuff, can affect those signals, so it's important that people's not a hundred percent dependent on being notified by those in case of seeking shelter.
Yeah, I had the WSIL app on my phone, it was going off, seemed like every five minutes or something, so.
Yeah, there's, uh, and you know, uh, modern days, there's a lot of options out there, um, Steve was actually down our facility when we were watching that and I actually follow a couple YouTube streamers, they're a little bit more in-depth on that versus some of our local news, um, but, but there are multiple ways, you get those alerts and shouldn't be dependent on the sirens, that's more of a legacy system anymore.
Okay, all right, thanks Doug.
Thanks Doug.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Come on up to, yes, please.
Good evening, uh, my name is Jim Stanhouse, uh, I live in the six hundred block of North Division Street, uh, I've been there about seven years now, uh, went to high school in Ducoy. Coach Carnes was a very young coach when I went to high school there, uh, but we moved back to take care of my mother and I got a little place on Division Street in a quiet little neighborhood and I spent a lot of the time sitting on the front porch and I just want to make the council, the mayor aware that in the last year or so, I'm noticing the traffic to get faster and faster and faster. In the last two weeks, I've seen two instances where a vehicle was going the speed limit north on Division and another car passed it, so I know that you guys have put stop signs on Division, I appreciate that, but I wanted to let you know that when they leave coal street stop sign, it's balls to the wall, some of the ones going north, going to work in the morning and anything, I appeal to you guys and ladies, anything that you can do or come up with that might slow the traffic down, uh, us folks on Division would appreciate it. It's a lot of small children that live in that neighborhood and I just don't want to ever see any kind of tragic event happening there, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chief, can you speak with him after the meeting, please? Thanks. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
You know, it's a good thing when you start out something, a meeting with prayer and pledge allegiance, but my question is, what happened to your devotion to the city of Ducoy and to the people, the poor people? By, and my meaning is, you implement these rules, ordinances, on landlords that have to pass it on to the poor people that they're trying to rent to and it just makes it harder on everybody and if this keeps up, y'all are voted in people and you can be voted out too and we're gonna have to work together to get these things resolved. I don't know, you just, it's just costing people more and more money to live in Ducoy. When I was a kid, there was sixty-six hundred people in Ducoy. I know it's went down a great deal since then, of course, I don't know, maybe that's what you want, I don't know, but some of the stuff that they've done, as such as business decisions, an attorney, you get another attorney, it costs double and, you know, that's, that's the taxpayers' money that y'all are spending and it's not right the way it's been done. That's all I gotta say.
What's your name, sir?
My name's Randy Ridgeway and y'all probably be getting a ticket tomorrow because I can't go by your rules that you implement, implement on landlords. First thing, what's good for one's good for all, but you've got friends that's got rental property and stuff and they're exempt because they only have one and most of my places are sold on contract for deed, but yet you still want me to pay quite a bit of money because the property's in my name? Well, I'll pay it whenever ever someone with a gun in Ducoy that has a mortgage on their house to a bank, a contract's a contract. They're registered at the south, the government building and it's legal, so like I said, I'll pay your fees whenever everybody with a mortgage in Ducoy pays them. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, there are data, motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Carnes, second by Commissioner Cruz, roll call.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Downs?
Yes.[1646.94]